I'm anxious to have you guys out and about.
Yeah, starting to see a few things ramp up over the weekend. Started hearing some fireworks going off, so.
Yeah, I've heard a couple, but they've been small, so. Not bad yet.
Are you guys getting an echo like I'm getting?
That whistle.
A real bad echo when I'm talking, so.
I think it's the camera is picking up some council chambers. Put them mute, the council chambers.
Or he's recording it, so.
Okay, guys ready?
All right, well.
On record.
Yeah, you got that taken care of. Thank you, David. Why don't I call to order the special city council meeting of the city of Lincoln City, Monday, June 29th, at 10:00 a.m., 2020. We'll acknowledge a roll call, and I can visually see all councillors present. So, you know, I don't know that there's any reason to roll call other than we see you all there and we're all present. We have a special order of business today is the collective bargaining agreement between the Lincoln City Police Employees Association and the city. Is that Abigail or Ron?
It's Abby.
Abby, take it.
Thank you. Mr. Chandler did send out the final version of the collective bargaining agreement. Nothing changed from the last time that we met with executive session. There were two typos that were corrected. Other than that, that should not look any different, except that it's cleaner because you had drafts last time. And so if you have any questions, we're happy to answer that. The union did sign off. So if you're okay with this, we would ask that the council approve the agreement. And this is the one-year agreement, so we will be bargaining again next spring.
Yeah, I might remind everybody that this would be, would have been normally a generally a three-year contract. But both parties agreed, thought it was in everyone's best interest to do a one-year contract. And so that's what this represents. This will also what put us on the same cycle as the public employees contract.
Yes, Mayor. Will put us on the same cycle, which will actually help us in facilitating our wage study this next winter as well.
Great, all right. Are there any questions regarding this agreement? Looking for any hands up. I don't. Oh, Deanna?
Yeah, I don't have a question. I just have a comment. And my comment is, I will be voting for this, but I'm hoping at the next when we do this again next spring. I'm just hoping for a better process that includes city council.
Okay, thank you. And Judy?
Yes, so to piggyback on that, I have a paper from our LOC attorney called "The Role of Elected Officials in Labor Negotiations." And so I'd like to share this with everybody ahead of time because I find it very educational. And hopefully we can provide direction to the city's bargaining team through a more informed process. But this gives us some background information. So if you're interested, I'd like to send it to everybody. Anybody interested?
Yep, why don't you, if you would, send it through Ron and let him disperse it out. That would be great, good idea. And any other comments? Seeing none, and entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the Lincoln City Police Employees Association and the city.
So moved.
And who is that? Rick?
Rick.
Rick, Rick made a motion to approve. You're second?
I'm your second.
Okay, is that Riley? Okay, now we have the second. Any further discussion? With that, and we could have a, how are we going to handle the roll call? Oh, Ron?
Hey, I can do roll call.
All right, would you please? Thank you, David.
Oh, Anderson?
Yes.
Inten?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Oakland?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes. I think the British alphabet is, the British alphabet might be a little different than what we're used to.
Thank you, councillor. All right, so it passed. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief, for your help. Abby, appreciate it, you putting it together. All right, next on the agenda, and I might remind those who are watching and councillors that this originally was going to be a work session, so we could go into a couple of these different subjects. One of them being municipal court discussion. So at, but so at this time, you know, we'll loosen up a bit and, you know, share information if we can. And, you know, talk through this municipal court issue. And who's taking? Ron, is that?
Yeah, I'll, well, I'll just kind of lay out the order, so that, and then let our employees take it from there. Just in February, our attorney, Richard Apicello, brought up the idea of a municipal court. And you had decided at that time that you were interested in more information about a municipal court. So Richard has prepared some information about that. The chief has some information, and then Debbie has some information. So we'll just follow that order and, and go from there.
Richard? Thank you. Richard?
Counsel, Your Honor. Essentially, I sent you a memo outlining what we could be doing in municipal courts. I'm going to start with what I actually recommended is, with regard to court, I recommend that we restore municipal court to its full jurisdiction in that we facilitate the prosecution of misdemeanor crimes in the court. I spoke to the DA, who I guess is the outgoing DA now, about establishing a balanced allocation of cases based on resources. He wanted to keep domestic violence because of the importance of victims' assistance. We would have to budget sufficient funds for court-appointed counsel, witness fees, and jury fees. Those are not terribly expensive items, but they are expenses. We would have to train the court clerk and do more coordination with the PD regarding probation violations, failure to pay show cause orders, affidavits for failure to appear and violation, for both violations and for crimes, as well as warrant procedures. And you might have to increase court staff by at least a half a person. In short, my recommendation is based on my experience that local criminal prosecution and probation, monitoring of misdemeanors will enhance local law enforcement. The second part of that corollary, if you will, is that I hate doing something and then having to do it again. And that's just, that's not just experience from having to move things around in my yard. The municipal court currently is not a court of record. The municipal court, if you are convicted of a violation after having a trial before the judge, you can basically get a de novo trial in the circuit court for essentially just the filing of an appeal. There's no finding of error. You just get a de novo. You get to do it again. Doing it again as if nothing had happened before is extremely inefficient. And all you need to do to correct that is to become a court of record. A court of record requires an ordinance and a recording system and an attorney judge. You pretty much, you have an attorney judge. Recording systems don't cost what they used to cost. My assistant did some background search and provided information on the cost in the packet. And obviously, for both violations and for crimes, not having to travel to Newport for those trials would save time and expense for both officers and witnesses. Not to mention the defendants themselves. This, I started out with kind of heavy on the law in this memo just because I wanted you to understand that there is a statute that gives the court jurisdiction over all misdemeanors that occur within the city limits. And the city attorney is actually the district attorney for purposes of those misdemeanors. And when I started here, I did a fair amount of property crimes. A lot of shoplifting theft cases came through criminal trespass. And very shortly after I started, the court made a decision in, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong computer. The court made a decision that in some violation cases, and this had to do with the Occupy Portland case. It was a Benoit case, and Twanda Fuller, which was a theft case. That in violation cases where the offense started as a crime, the defendant was entitled to a jury trial. And so I informed the city council about those cases. And also, I know I sent the cases to the council, and I know we had a discussion, which led to the adoption by the council of a readoption of the criminal code. And then another adoption with a reduction of the charges down to violations. And this is the one we talked about in terms of fireworks enforcement that had never been used by the police. I did go brief the police department. This is back when Keith Killian was chief. But the upshot of that was the statutory allowance to allow a city prosecutor or any prosecutor, the DA, to reduce a charge after it's, after the defendant's been arrested using criminal procedures, kind of was reduced significantly because even if you reduce a criminal charge to a violation, the defendant might still be entitled to a jury trial, which is just a lot more work than a simple violation. And there was a practice here by the prior city attorney of taking criminal charges and reducing them under that statute. So that case, that holding directly affected what used to be done here. Cases were cited to muni court as crimes. The prior prosecutor would reduce them to violations. And then there wouldn't have to be any jury trial. Now with the Twanda Fuller and Joan Benoit cases, the possibility of a jury trial still exists even with a violation. But that's not really the important part is that it's not about the money. Local enforcement in the muni court takes some of the burden off the district attorney's office in terms of the higher, they get to prosecute the higher-level offenses, the C felonies and those things. And more the person misdemeanors, the 163 offenses like assault for, domestic violence. They can spend more time on those cases if we take care of the property stuff. The bad checks, the criminal trespass. So what I'm really saying is that it's worth the investment, even if you don't make more money, to use your municipal court more fully. It's your decision to make. Debbie pointed out in an email I just got that back in 98 or something, 99, in a budget, in the budget context, the council apparently, in the budget, was told that we could just send cases to the DA and we wouldn't have to prosecute crimes locally. Well, you don't have to do it. There is a statute that prohibits you from giving away traffic crimes and crimes created by your own code. But we didn't try to do that by ordinance, so that wasn't implicated in the budget. That said, my recommendation is what it is. I think we can do more good for the city by more fully utilizing the municipal court. And so that's why I made the recommendation I made.
Great.
Answer any questions if you have them.
Yeah, any questions of Richard? Riley?
Yeah, thank you for the documents, and thanks Debbie for sending those over. There, on the second page, it says, it was also very time consuming, I'm sorry. The city receives a pro rata share of the revenue. Where in our budget does it show our pro rata share of the revenue from the county's court system?
That is shown on, it's called the District Court Collections. One of the reports I have, the report that I have that lists revenue, it's separated out in that line. You can kind of see how it went from about $4,000 up to about $17,000 after the change was made. So it.
That was last year's?
No, that was back in 2000. You want to know what last year's amount was?
Yeah.
Let me, let me pull open the budget. Hang on just a sec. That's all right, I got it online. State Court Collections, 20, estimate for 1920 is $22,000. The year 1819, we actually got $30,000.
And do we know what percentage of that we're receiving from the county? Like, what are they taking from the total? Are they giving us 100% of what's for Lincoln City?
That I don't know what the percent is.
Yeah, but it could be, that number could be more.
I believe there's a formula in the statutes about how much and in what order they dispense any revenue. I can find that for you.
Less if it was just 100% Lincoln City.
So could we get an explanation, Riley, when you're asked about the shared revenue? Where, Richard, where does that come from? Is this current, must obviously?
Is that the court fees that they get from all the, everything we send down there?
When a defendant goes to circuit court, and the city police are the people that brought it to the circuit court, we get a share of the, of any revenue that they would receive through the circuit court adjudication. So if the DA dismisses all the charges, we're not going to get anything. But if there's a trial and the defendant is fined, then we're placed, there's an allocation in the statute where you, you know, first they pay this assessment, then they pay this assessment, and then, you know, the city gets. And I think one of them, one of the memos I had sent had a breakdown of, you can contract with the court. And I think that may have included the allocation.
Okay.
Or at least a reference to.
Right. Other, other questions from counsel? Oh, Judy?
Yeah, I was noticing that, I think it was in 2014, the council at that time made an ordinance that allowed the officers to cite criminal charges as a violation. And I believe at that time, kind of the philosophy of the city was, city council was to be nice to everybody. And by, by not enforcing the options available to the police officers, I don't think it lends much enforcement that we're looking for. So I, I think it's a worthy thing to consider, to consider a muni court for that reason, to give some enforcement capabilities for these violations.
And as I mentioned in the memo, those changes in 2014 were in direct response to the Benoit and Fuller cases. Basically, the rulings there were that the, if the defendant is subjected to criminal procedures, they get handcuffed, they get detained, they get taken down to the station. That that implicates certain rights. And the later reduction of the charge by the prosecutor unilaterally doesn't take away the stigma of those criminal procedures. So therefore, the defendant is entitled to a jury trial, even if the charge has been reduced to a violation. I don't particularly agree with the holding, but that's the holding of the Oregon Supreme Court in those two cases. So in order to avoid that result, the council gave in those ordinances, the officers the ability to make the reduction that I would otherwise make on the spot, and so never involving criminal procedures. They treat it, and we talked about this in the context of fireworks. Rather than arrest somebody for a fireworks violation, they would give them a ticket for a fireworks. Even though it's a crime, they treat it like a violation from the outset. If they did that, they have this avenue available. It's not been used. But it is available to the officers. And it was, it was just a creative idea. We tried to get around that case.
Chief, does the perspective of the police department weigh in here? Could you give us some thoughts?
Well, a lot of this stuff that was done prior to my membership with the Lincoln City Police Department was observed specifically. I've got Lieutenant Roderick and Sergeant Wynn with me today because they went through the experience of having municipal court try misdemeanors in the past. But there, you know, there are some concerns from our end of it. One of the things that comes up is that if we take these misdemeanor crimes such as criminal trespass and misdemeanor property crimes and direct us to specifically prosecute those in municipal court, it ties our hands to a certain degree. We have a lot of what we call frequent flyers that when we take the ability for us to lodge them in jail away from us, they basically come to that knowledge that, you know, whenever they commit these crimes, they're going to get a citation into municipal court and not end up happening to face the risk of going to jail for it. And for example, a year or two ago, we were having issues with vandalism and transient issues in the Taft area. And our business owners and our officers would trespass these people from those properties. And then when we had repeat offenses, we would end up eventually lodging these people. And once they understood that that was the line we were drawing in the sand, those problems diminished significantly by having that, that ability. The other thing to keep in mind is that we don't operate a jail here. We have holding cells that we are limited to four hours of being able to hold a person before we either have to turn them loose or transport them to the, to the county jail. We also experienced in the past that when defendants failed to appear on the citations into municipal court, they would issue warrants. And then when we would encounter them in the, in public with the outstanding warrants, what would end up happening is we would issue them a citation to appear. And then it would become a cycle of failure to appears in court because there was no ability to lodge them under those violations. So, and of course, the other things that popped into our mind were things that, such as Richard has already explained to you is, you know, where does, you know, the role of victims' assistance for person crimes, you know, misdemeanor, person crimes enter into it? You know, the cost of defense, court-appointed defense, the juries, the witness fees, and that sort of, that sort of thing. So, but what I'd like to do now is just turn a little bit of time over to Sergeant Wynn and Lieutenant Broderick and let them explain a little bit about their previous experience with this, so.
Hello?
Hi.
My experience, when I first got hired here in 1991, municipal court was, was operating as a full, full court for misdemeanors. And the reason why that ended up ultimately going away was because of what he, what the chief was just saying. We were, we were issuing warrants for people who wouldn't show up. When we did get them in custody and lodge them, then the city would have to pay for that lodging at the county jail to hold them until one of us could go down, pick them up, bring them back to show up in court. So the, the cost for, for cost effectiveness of it, it wasn't working out for the court to do that. And we had warrants that were perpetual that just kept, we just would cite them and they would not show up. And then we'd cite them and they'd not show up, and we'd cite them and they'd not show up. So at, at that time, they deemed that it wasn't worthwhile to continue to have that. When they would fine the people, you know, saying you can't squeeze blood out of a turnip, that was part of the problem is you could fine them as much as you wanted to fine them, but they don't pay the fine. And so it was more, it cost the city more to do all that, and then they were recouping. And that was back in 1991, and I don't know exactly when it's, we stopped doing it then. And then they, 10 years later or so, they started it up again trying to do them. And we found problems with citing in misdemeanor cases that were like weapons cases. So we wanted those to go to a court of record. You know, someone used a weapon, you know, menacing or something like that. And then there was the victims' assistance aspect and the ability to get a jury to show up, enough people to make a jury and to do a jury selection process. That was, that was a problem during the initial years. But they would reduce those to violations. The, in the second time we tried it, they would reduce everything to a violation, the city attorney would. And so now you don't have that going on their record as being a weapons violation. Also with harassment for victims, they weren't getting victims' assistance that they should be getting because it was reduced to a violation. So those are some of the things that we thought were an issue. So those are some of the things that, that we thought were an issue. And having an officer make the decision to, I'm going to cite this person in, knowing that it's going to be a violation, and I'm going to cite this other person in, knowing that it's going to be a crime, we did not want to be making those kinds of decisions out there because we didn't want to open the city up to any kind of liability lawsuit of, uh, well, why did this officer, you know, cite this Hispanic person in as a, as a crime in this, you know, non Hispanic person in as a, as a violation? Why, why did they do that? And so that's, that's why we stopped, um, writing the sites. That way, if, if the city attorney wasn't going to be the one that decided whether it should be reduced or not, we didn't want the officers doing that either. So I, I don't know any of the officers that are unhappy with what we've been doing. Um, I don't think you're going to save any money as far as overtime because there's a three hour call out. So if you're three hours and you have to drive down to Newport in that three hours and drive back or drive to, you know, municipal court, if it's on your day off, you're still going to get three hours. Doesn't, doesn't make any difference. So that's just my take on it.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Broderick?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I don't think that I have anything more to say other than what the chief and Sergeant Winn has. The biggest thing I see from an operations perspective is if we pick certain misdemeanor crimes to put into muni court, it ties our hands at the patrol level from being able to take someone into custody. And I know misdemeanor makes it sound like it's not that bad, but a lot of our, as the chief said, frequent flyers, we have no other choice but to take these people into custody and lodge them to get them out of the community for a certain amount of time because if, if we don't, we'll just continue dealing with them over and over and over again. And then the community also is dealing with them. So that would be something I would just ask you to take into consideration when you're talking about this.
All right. So bottom, bottom line from the PD is that, you know, we are happy to perform our duties in whatever manner that the council feels is, is the best interest of the, our, our city. Um, and, um, I'm not saying that, uh, Richard doesn't have, uh, a good plan on how this, to make this work. Uh, it's just, um, it's a lot more complicated in our minds than just simply saying that we're going to start doing this in municipal court. Uh, you know, there's the costs involved, uh, but then there's the complexity of, of how it affects, uh, our day-to-day operation and how effective that we can be. Um, there'll be parts of it that will possibly make us, um, more efficient in, in city. But, uh, we, based on our previous experience, we, we feel that there are some, uh, issues that will be created that, uh, are unintended, but will, uh, exacerbate some of the problems that we are experiencing here in, in town that we're right now, uh, feeling like we've got a pretty good handle on.
Thank you, chief. Yana, you've had your hand up for a while. Uh, you've got a question for?
Yeah, I have a question actually for both, um, for all of us, just to, right now, if somebody, if you have to take someone to jail, you're taking them to Newport. And so that wouldn't change with, um, if we decide to move over to this other, um, way of doing business, is that right?
No, it, 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 and, and from our perspective or from our knowledge, it, it would. If, if these, um, misdemeanor violations are being handled in the city, um, then, um, our ability to lodge down there would come, uh, at a cost where right now it, it doesn't.
Yeah, I, I think that's the point. It's so council shouldn't think that you can't, number one, um, we can cite as a city ordinance violation, a crime, and we can cite as, uh, an ORS state law violation. So if you commit harassment, you know, you're right, they'll arrest for harassment on the citation. And, uh, you might get the citation given to you in lieu of taking you into custody. But certain offenses like assault or domestic violence is a, there, that's a mandatory arrest statute. So they have to take you down and lodge you. Um, the, if the city's prosecuting that case in municipal court, um, that person gets lodged, we may, uh, be told by the jail that they want to bill us for that person's incarceration. Um, the way we handled it in St. Helens was the judge, under some case law, imposed the cost of incarceration as a condition of probation on the defendant in the sentencing order. So he made it a requirement. In fact, it, it was pre-printed on there. All he had to do was check the box. The defendant was told that, by the way, you got to pay $67, wherever the rate was at the time, it was 15 years ago, but he was told he had to pay that as a condition of his probation. So, um, he may get 365 days jail with 360 suspended and, and then he's ordered to pay $25 a month toward his, his fines and jail bill. And if he doesn't pay, he gets a show cause order. See the judge, why haven't you paid your $25 a month? And I remember this distinctly, uh, well, judge, I, I just don't have the money. Um, can you, to the bench? Yes. You smell like cigarettes. Uh, how much is, does a pack of cigarettes cost? You know, how many cigarettes do you smoke a day? Oh, two packs a day? Oh, and you can't afford $25 a month? Take him to jail. And he gets another, uh, jail bill. So, you know, there was vigorous follow-up, uh, and conditions on probation that the municipal court judge made for that we recovered our costs. So if, if you just want to give it to the DA, it's less work for me. Um, what I'm saying is, if we take control over some of these things, we can have better results. Uh, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with what the DA is doing. They have a lot of attorneys down there. Um, they seem to come and go fairly often, but my argument is, um, you'd have more control if you, if you focus on follow-up. And there are ways around the expenses, uh, issues that are being raised.
Oh, we hear you, Richard, but you know, we're, we're trying to sort through these, these things. It's been on the table for a long time and, you know, this is really the first time we're getting into some real, uh, questions. Yana, did you have some follow-up there?
I do, I do. So, um, the, my question about the jail is, yes, it's still in Newport if it is used. And then, um, and so I'm, and there may or may not be a cost associated with it depending on what crime has been committed. So that's still a little, okay, fuzzy. And then, um, I'm just interested too, the chief was talking about frequent flyers, those people that continue to, um, exhibit the behaviors that got him in trouble first time, second time, however many times. And, um, to me, that seems to be the point, um, or kind of the crux of all of this is that we need, we need less of those minor crimes. The larger crimes, I'm not sure, chief, you can correct me, but the larger crimes are going to be handled in the same way irregardless, is that?
Yes, that, that's my understanding is that, you know, Richard's looking for the, the, the lower level misdemeanor crimes to come, come to the city and the, the more severe misdemeanor crimes to continue to go to the district attorney.
Yes.
So we're, uh, if I'm remembering our statistics right, um, was it last year, 1,100? Last year, 2019, uh, we sent 1,100, um, misdemeanor, um, crimes to the DA's office. Um, and, uh, and, you know, and I appreciate, you know, I think Richard's right on when he says that, uh, in order to, to make these things, um, go, there has to be vigorous probationary follow-up. Um, but I'm still, um, a little bit, uh, you know, concerned as to who's, who's going to be responsible for following up on the probation and, and, uh, you know, the, the fine payments and that sort of stuff. Um, and how that's, how that's going to be managed when we currently have a, uh, probation, uh, parole and probation, um, organization in, uh, the county that, that is in place to manage those things now. And I don't, you know, if we're doing that here, those are not going to fall to that organization. They're going to fall to somebody here in the city, uh, to manage those. Uh, so, but, um, 2019, we sent, uh, 577 A misdemeanors, uh, 201 B misdemeanors, 112 C misdemeanors and, uh, and 209, um, unclassified misdemeanors, uh, for a total of, uh, just shy of 1,100, uh, cases to the DA's office.
Okay. So I'm still concerned about these frequent flyers, which seems to be kind of the headache for the police department if I'm reading between the lines here. And, um, and I, I'm still on, I'm, I still don't know which direction is the better, um, better way to go. So chief, you said the way that you're doing things now actually has reduced that number, but you just listed off 1,100 misdemeanors in one year. That seems like a lot to me. Um, we're a small town, so, um, you know, I, I just, I'm not sure about that. One thing, I'll leave that for now, but one thing that, um, I do like about the approach that Richard has, um, responded when council asked him to put some info together here is the, um, the flexibility, um, and range of options, um, available, which includes community service. And I know we've had the community service discussion in the past, but I know it's got to work. Is that, you know, there, if the crime is seen as whatever it is, trespassing, um, theft, whatever it is, if that's seen as a crime against the community, which it is, then it makes perfect sense to me to do something for the community in return. And, um, so that part of it, I really like, and I don't know if that can be transferred over to your current, um, way of doing business now, chief. But, um, I just, um, I like, I really like all the flexibility given in the background information that the city attorney gave to us. And I don't know if you guys want to talk about that at all, but, um...
Community service is actually still, uh, an option for circuit court, um, and, uh, the, the DA to, uh, offer up as, uh, part of the, uh, fines and punishment, uh, for misdemeanor crimes, even through them. Um, again, I go back to, um, the other part of that challenge is, you assign community service, then, then who's going to oversee that and manage that, that group of people that's required to do those and monitor that that's being done.
But, you know, if we're looking at this as a city, as a town, that we care about the people who live here, even those people who are doing some wayward behaviors that we would like to change. I mean, do we want to make this change for long-term for some of those people, those frequent flyers that you're talking about? I just, you know, I just think, I don't know, um, even if it took somebody, and we don't know who that somebody is, to oversee a program like that. And in the past, we've spoken of the Parks Director because she has experience with that. But, um, and I was, anyway, and I wasn't just thinking about those, um, higher misdemeanors that go to circuit court. I don't know, I just want, want to know more about that. But anyway, I have other things, but I'll save them for after somebody else.
All right. Riley, you have your hand up.
Yeah, so we see, I have a few questions. There was 1,100 citation, uh, I'm sorry, 1,100 misdemeanors brought to court last year, but how many citations were written in lieu of?
I'd have to go back to our, um, database to, to get that, get those figures for you.
Cause that would, that is a number against which we would balance out those misdemeanors, right? Right. Okay. So, and then what are the, what are we currently sitting on as far as unpaid tickets, uh, unpaid citations? What's that dollar amount?
Couple of million, I thought. Debbie, do you know?
I, yeah, well, I can get that, but it's, it's a hard number. It's kind of like, um, a hospital gross charges, charge. It's, it's a bit, um, it's a very inflated number because the default amount is so much greater than the actual charge amount. And if they actually contact the judge and work out an arrangement, it's often greatly reduced. So the amount outstanding, yeah, it's in the millions, but it's, um, it's a squishy number.
Sure. And I get that, but the point is that, that there's a lot of money there and that maybe it's rotted in, we would better be able to, I don't know, do something with that.
Well, we have it with a collection agent, we have it in with a collection agency that uses all the options, you know, under the law to collect. Um, there's very, it's, um, pretty limited on what they can do. I don't believe we could do better in-house, but that's just my opinion.
And then I was kind of confused when, um, it was talked about weapon, weapon violations didn't stay. And it seems like you were, it's, what I understood it as, when weapons violations came through, you would take off the weapons violations and they would just be disappeared. And so it felt like to me, we're making criminals safer by removing the violation and therefore it didn't show up on their record when weapons violation is probably pretty important. But because of the way the system is and how the officers felt, that they felt like that wouldn't be, it was very confusing to me when, um, that was being talked about.
I, what happens, um, misdemeanor conviction, you're supposed to, and it wasn't always this way, okay? There were, the reporting requirements for misdemeanors have changed over the years. Now, uh, it's very important and municipal courts need to, um, report the convictions for misdemeanors. I think the point that was made is when the prior prosecutor would reduce the charge to a violation, it would not go on that person's record as a crime. And so things that, um, you know, were cumulative, like, uh, sex offense and things like that, weapons, uh, where if you had a prior conviction for something, the next one would be higher, those kinds of things wouldn't show up on your record. It's just like with DUII, you know, if you get your first DUII, the minimum fine is this, the second one, this. So it's very important when you pro, I, I don't like reducing charges to misdemeanors, period. Or I'm sorry, reducing misdemeanors to violations, period. I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that unless it was part of a plea bargain. Um, and you wouldn't do that for certain cases like, uh, domestic violence DUII, you're prohibited from, uh, doing that. Um, and, uh, my first trial was a unlawful, uh, concealed carry case. Um, you know, the guy was tried and convicted in municipal court. We report that conviction, it's on his record. Turned out later, he had a, a prior conviction for domestic violence and under a federal law, couldn't possess a weapon anyway. But there, there's a, there's a, there's a lot involved in prosecution, but, uh, victims assistance was handled by my secretary, um, I, in, for the crimes that I did. And I, I did domestic violence cases. Um, community service, we had intergovernmental agreements with the Humane Society, uh, with the county and one other, I'm, I can't remember. And we would refer people out, um, to do community service work. I, we even had for a time, uh, people doing community service work at, well, we had through our Parks Department. Um, there's a step in between sending, um, you know, when, when Debbie talks about the, the backlog and, and, uh, fines, that's all, for the most part, those are all violations, uh, mostly violations because, you know, we haven't been doing crimes. Um, there, there have to be some crimes, but those people are probably not on bench probation because the judge, in my experience, just wasn't doing probation. I don't know why. For a misdemeanor, I think you can put someone on probation for up to five years. And if you can haul them in front of you on an order to show cause on, uh, uh, for a, a criminal misdemeanor and ask them why they didn't pay, and they don't have a good reason, you can actually lodge them. Um, that's the kind of vigorous follow-up you have to have. And that's a step before you send things to collection agencies. When you have a judgment that hasn't been paid, you send it to a collection agency. When you have somebody on bench probation, you haul them before the judge and they When you have somebody on bench probation, you haul them before the judge, and they have to explain. The other, the alternatives, you know, sometimes you get the frequent flyers, the people that never pay, you can offer them the, the ability to do corrections work crew, like through the county or community service, because you, you can find other ways for those people to pay their debt than just fining them. You can't impose a fine and say you can work it off doing community service because that's, that's makes them basically an employee, and then there's all kinds of insurance problems with that. But these things are, I, I mean, I've dealt with all these things before. I'm just saying, I think it would be a good thing to focus our court on providing local justice here, so...
Yeah, and then can you talk about again, the de novo cost, and what that would be, actually having to do things twice would, how costly is that? And how negative is that?
Well, it, it was always a lot worse when it was a crime. I had a particular criminal defense attorney in St. Helens that every, every time he lost in muni court, he would file a de novo appeal, and we'd have to do it all over again in circuit court. And that's expensive and aggravating for everyone. The witnesses especially, the victims. I had a furnishing alcohol case where I had like eight victims, there were a big party, and each one of the persons furnished that was under 21 was technically a victim. And they all had to show up twice, and, and the story changed, the defendant's story changed between the first trial and the second trial. And it's amazing because they, they all know what, the defendant knows what the witnesses are going to say, so they changed the story to fit what they heard in the first trial. It's, it's really not good justice. It's, it's manipulative, it's not, not a good way to do things.
Mr. Appicello, what?
But there's also, you know, the officer has to show up twice, the witnesses have to show up twice.
Okay. Mr. Appicello, could you give us a number of de novo cases out of Lincoln City that, in the last two years, three years?
Well, we, again, we're not really doing crimes, so there have been no criminal cases appealed to circuit court. I don't know how many violation appeals there have been, but if you had, I suspect there haven't been a lot because I haven't had a lot of questions about that, but I don't, I don't appear in violation cases. So unless attorney involved, I wouldn't, I don't know.
Ma'am, could I interject?
Yeah. Yeah, David?
So I'm, I'm the, I'm the supervisor over court, and if we were getting those, I know our court clerk would come and ask me how to proceed on that. So I'm not aware of, aware of maybe one.
So I guess it begs the question, Mr. Appicello, as I'm hitting all this, you must have time on your hands? Is that, you know, is, you have excess capacity?
I, I will say, no, I'm not saying I'm bored. I just see a need. And, and I've done this in the past, so I'm willing to take it on. I'm not saying I don't have enough to do. Please don't think that's the case.
Okay.
So just telling you, I see a need that, that should be addressed.
All right.
And I, when I don't see offenses prosecuted. Someone's trespassing in our park and violation of our closure, I don't think that we should just let that go.
Okay. I hear you. I guess if you don't have capacity, then that means a staffing level that has to be added, and, you know, it's a budget issue. Even though you're, I think you're quoted as saying, don't look at this as a revenue thing. Currently, as I understand it, we are, it is a revenue thing, the way we're handling it now. Money comes in from the county for a change, rather than us, you know, having to spend and go into the red and make priorities on a limited budget. So, you know, you know, especially now, and based on our budgets that we just approved, we realize the staff expense item is, you know, way outrunning, you know, the revenue on most of our departments. So this would only increase that and get those lines crossing earlier. So, you know, I, I hear the law and order called. I'm a little rattled at this point, very much concerned of the economics of it. And Deanna?
I just, just in listening to the discussion here now, I see the police chief and the city attorney having different ideas about this. So could we, could we please ask the city attorney and the chief and the folks who have some history with this, with him, to put a group together to work out what this would look like? Because we're asking the dollar questions, which, you know, we have to do our jobs, we've got to know what this costs. And the staffing and all of that has already been sorted out by, by the city attorney and his, in his paper to us. And I just, if they could work together and see how this could, so the police chief could have some of his issues kind of work through, and so some of the ideas that the city attorney has had that might increase, and I don't call this law and order, I call this enforcement. We have, we, the council have asked for this information. We are tired of us getting bombarded constantly with people telling us, this isn't happening, this is, you know, nothing's, you know, all these small or big things that are happening out here in the community aren't being dealt with. And so I want to see how this would look as a program, rather than, than the city attorney's idea of how it works and how the chief thinks it won't work. Can we just put it all together and see if we can agree on how this could work? And the money, and the staffing, and all of that. And how do we do, you know, I heard some new, new ideas that I hadn't thought of before about community service. We can contract out with other organizations. We have stream restoration that needs to be done, for crying out loud. There are so many, there's, the list is so long of things that could be done in that category. And I just don't, I think we can sort all this out if we just work together instead of two different opposing ideas about this.
Ron, you got a comment?
I do. If I could just follow up on that, if that's the desire of the council, there are just some things to consider, and what Counselor Hinton has proposed is a way to consider those. The first is, you have five groups or entities that, or individuals that are involved in this process of somebody going to court. You have a defendant, you have a police department, you have an attorney, you have a court or judge, and then you have the persons who are following up on whatever the judge decides. And in court, you may have juries in there as well. All of those, we've had a little bit of discussion today about their role in this process. So as you can, if, if the council wants to go forward considering this, there's a few things to ask yourself. First of all, what is broken? What is it you're actually trying to fix? Okay? Richard has, has highlighted some of those. We just heard from Counselor Hinton on some of the things that she feels that are not working the way they should. The second is, then becomes, well, how do, what's the source of the problem and how do you fix it? Is it a police problem? Is it a judge problem? Is it an attorney problem? Is it a defendant problem? Is it the follow-up problem? So what, when you identify the problems, then you look at where is the problem originating? And then ask yourself the question, can that be fixed within the existing operations? The existing setup that we have using the district court? Or do we need to scrap the way, the organizational structure that we have now and go on a different route? So I, I think that we have kind of jumped to the end question of scrap the way we do it now and do something else, when we may not have actually identified or at least settled in on what is the problem, and where does that problem originate, and can it be fixed within the existing organization? And then finally, and Debbie hasn't had a chance to talk about this, there is a cost. We estimate, we addressed this in the 2018 budget, and we estimated that it would cost about $250,000 for this, and that cost did not include any follow-up personnel. And we estimated that we might be able to bring in an additional $100,000 in revenue. There's questions on that. I'd be conservative in trying to, I'd be, I'd be more than, I would be more liberal in estimating what my costs were, and less and more conservative in estimating what additional revenues would be if, if, if putting that to place. So those are the, you know, those are the, it begins by asking, by the council settling on the question, what's broken? And then we start looking at it going from there, and, and once that's identified, how do you fix it? What are the options that are available to you? Can you do it within the existing setup, or do we need to scrap it and set up a municipal court? And what are the other issues that come into play once you set that up? You've heard that from our police department. Then finally, what's the cost of doing it?
But Ron, how do we get there as far as a subgroup or a committee as such to, you know, pull all that together?
Well, if, if you'd want to do that, I would be happy to help facilitate the group. I think Counselor Hinton is right. We use all of our staff resources to start asking some questions, but you've already asked some questions that I think are valid in, in, as a beginning point. I've listed one, two, three, four, five, six, eight questions that have come up in the course of this meeting. There, of the amount that comes into the district court for Lincoln City cases, how much of it goes to district court? How much of it goes to the city? Of the 1,100 misdemeanor cases, how many of these are repeat offenders? How many people processed in district court? How many of them received community service? If we have a municipal court, who will oversee the community service and what will be the cost? How many citations were written in lieu of the 1,100, or in lieu of, I'm assuming that means an arrest? What's the accounts payable for the court fines of the cases that have gone to the collection agency? How many and how much does the collection agency receive? How many de novo cases have we had? Can we, and then finally, can we ask the staff to put together how this will actually look? So that's just the questions that I've listed. There are more that are in there. So I think if you're interested in pursuing this, we've got talented people in our attorney and our police chief. I'd want to bring in the county attorney to talk to them, or the district attorney to talk to them a little bit. I'd most definitely want to hear from what the judge has to say about it, and we start putting together some information to bring back to you that is in a lot more detail. And I guess in the same way I would put together a budget, this is what's going to be needed. These are the outcomes that you would be expected to receive from this.
Debbie, you there, did Ron cover what you were going to talk about?
No, I actually had some input from a court operations as well at some point.
Oh, what do you, bring it up then?
Can we do that now, or? Okay. So just real quickly, I would reiterate that the financial concern, I'm very concerned with this financially. When I, I looked back at the financial records when this change was made in 95, and I put together a summary report to show, but when we quit doing misdemeanors, we did not lose any revenue. The revenue that we lost was offset by the increase of the state, state work. However, we did have a significant decrease in cost. And in my experience with the court here, I, I, I do not anticipate that we would generate anywhere near the amount of revenue to pay for it. But beyond the financial concern, which for me is a very strong concern, I would point out that our court, for years and years, since I've been here for, so at least 13 years, and I'm assuming probably since our current judge has been there, our court does not operate on a vigorous enforcement policy. It, it is a friendly court, it emphasizes compliance, not penalizing people. Under the current environment, if you brought misdemeanors here, you would, you would not get better enforcement. You would get, in my opinion, given the current environment, so you would get worse. So I think there's a, there's a, there's a mismatch between, when you're talking about better enforcement and vigorous follow-up, there's a mismatch between that and how our court has operated for years. And cultural changes would need to be done.
Right. Well, that, that helps, and that's, is what kind of Ron was talking about, trying to identify, you know, the real issues, and it might be already, the system we've got just needs some, some tweaking. Mr. Appicello, you had your hand up for a while. You're on.
Just one technical thing is, well, two things. There is no district court, it's a circuit court. The district courts went away like 20 years ago. So it's, it's just not that. Now, when I started, I became an attorney in 88 and started my first job in January 89, but I didn't prosecute crimes until, I prosecuted civil things, but not crimes until 1998, I'm sorry, yeah, 98, when I went to St. Helens. And for about eight years, I did crimes, but I started out doing it all on my own with a half-time secretary. Later on, we made enough money that I could afford to hire a full-time prosecutor. So when I left in '06, the revenue from the prosecution of misdemeanor crimes in the municipal court was enough to support an attorney and her assistant. So I'm, and I'm not saying that we should do this for revenue. I've never said that. I think we should do it because it's just important to have local law enforcement. And I don't dispute that the current judge has a different take on, on how to approach these things. That's just the way it is.
Richard, I, I think maybe something may have changed in St. Helens, because when I looked at their last financials, they were losing $100,000 on their court. So I, I don't know if things have changed since we left.
No doubt. Again, I, I left in '06, and the prosecutor that I hired left a couple of years later, and they changed judges, and they just recently got a new judge, and things have turned around for them. But yeah, things went downhill bad.
Okay. All right, so really, we've, we've got on the table, I, yeah, Deanna Holdon and Riley, I understand, we've got a lot of discussion, and there's been a suggestion, is we're, we're not going to make decisions, I'm betting today, other than to maybe take up Ron's suggestion of getting the appropriate people together to, you know, map out more information for us as a council, to see the, the pros and cons and expenses, and, and look at, one, as he said, what we really wanted to fix and where might be the best place to fix that. So, you know, rather than, you know, we can beat this to death, or if, if that's a direction, that direction that council wants to go, you know, could we, you know, so direct, make motions to direct staff in, in order to get this conversation, you know, and, and real meat to, off the table and on to where we can make a decision? uh, off the table and on to where we can make a decision. Deanna?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to, um, say even earlier, um, that I think the judge needs to be part of this discussion. And I, um, and as far as identifying the problem, Ron, I think you've heard from us for years now what the problem is. So, um, I think you know. And then, um, the other thing is that in our conversations with the judge, I've talked with them and I know that, um, Counselor Parsons has talked with them and he has, he said that he, and, um, when we've all talked with them as a group, that he has said that he will follow the council direction and goals of the council. So I'm assuming that that's what he's doing now. He thinks what he's doing is what we want because we have not given him any encouragement to look broader, look at things differently or anything. So I don't want to throw the judge under the bus. We've given him no, um, direction. So, um, and I would like to move to direct, um, to direct staff to work together, including, and, um, maybe led by, um, our city attorney and co-led by, um, by the chief, um, of police, as well as adding Debbie because she oversees the program in the court and also, um, including the judge. And then any other people that are needed to expand the discussion. And I would say throw it wide open and see within legal bounds where, um, we can actually get to a place um, that will encourage all, everybody, um, that will be affected by this to take, um, a strong and collaborative effort to get to where we want to be.
Um, Deanna, I, I heard that was a long motion. Um, so could we, uh, concise it down to, uh, direct, you're, you're interested in directing Ron uh, to pull together the appropriate, uh, people, um, and those that you've, correct, named to help us as council, uh, get a better handle on this whole topic with more information and, um, statistics and data?
Sure.
Well, second.
Second. We have a second from Mr. Parsons. Um, and discussion, Riley?
So I just, you know, that, I would like to know what the operating expense percentages are supposed to be for, um, this type of court that we're trying to do. Similarly to the community center, we have this 42% of operating cost number that council has determined. What is typically sized, similarly sized communities have as their general operating revenue? And, you know, Debbie said we have a friendly judge and, um, we have millions of dollars in unpaid tickets and violations. And I don't know how far friendly has gotten us. And I'm not afraid of changing the system to be more accountable just to make it happen in whatever capacity that is. But, uh, I hear you that things are a certain way and, and they're not, it's not as effective and as beneficial to the community and as, you know, you know, keeping criminals down. So, um, I, I don't know. I, I think that's an interesting statement for her to me and, um, give her insight as far as what she feels the judge is like and I, I, it was very interesting and I, I don't, I don't want to have friendly judge who just lacks a daysical in a way, it seems like, to just let everything just, ah, you know, and now we have millions of dollars in unpaid violations.
Well, Riley, I just, again, that, excuse me, but I just want to emphasize again that that comes from council's direction. So maybe it's not on the judge, maybe it's on us.
No, I don't remember saying, don't, I don't remember being a part of that conversation.
All right, so, um, we have a motion on the table, uh, with a second from Mr. Parsons. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed with a nay? All right, that passed then. Um, but the, Mr. Appicello, you had two that I, I guess the question I would have is, is the court of record um, part of this conversation, part of the, uh, um, analysis that this subgroup would be looking at?
I think it's, I think it's important to be a court of record if you're going to do criminal prosecution. If, if you choose not to do criminal prosecution and you just are doing violations, you could still become a court of record and still avoid de novo hearings at the circuit court. Uh, if, you know, it doesn't go the defendant's way in the municipal. So you can do it, um, but I think the real, again, the real expense um, of having to do it over again is if you have to have a trial and you win, your defendant is convicted, and then you have to do that all over again in circuit court. That's where it really, you know, little trials for violations aren't as big a deal. So I, I think it's more, it, they can be done separately, but I think it's more tied to the criminal prosecution.
All right, so if we could, Mr. Chandler, make sure that piece is also in the, the discussion. All right, thank you. You all right, Mitch? Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay, all right, then let's move to the other topic and that's the, um, use of right-of-way for parking.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, so some time ago, um, I'm sorry, I had to move to the city council chambers. My computer froze up.
Oh.
Um, some time ago, uh, hang on.
Can you guys turn down a little bit your thing?
Um, uh, you had been asked by residents of Eighth Court to fix a problem that they are having. Specifically, they're having a parking problem. Um, and, uh, and, um, and so our staff has been looking into this. Uh, there was quite a bit of discussion on how to fix that. Um, Richard, uh, in, as we, as I visited with him, he has an enforcement, uh, policy that we do have in place that we wanted to get in front of you to talk a little bit about that. And then I have a little bit more information to provide to you when he's done. So, Richard?
Okay, so the, the memo I sent to you, uh, well, starts out with, there's authority there. And the first thing is, is, uh, there's a section of the code which was recently added when we did the, uh, uh, telecom, the small telecom. It's really in the wrong place, but it does talk about your authority to regulate the right-of-way. Um, way is essentially, it's an easement benefiting the public. Uh, that, uh, allows, sometimes acquired by dedication, sometimes by deed. But it basically allows the, the public and in the city to utilize the right-of-way for public purposes. Um, and the important part of that is public. Um, it's not for private use. Um, you kind of emphasized that recently, last year, you passed an ordinance about storage in the right-of-way. You're not allowed to put your stuff out in the right-of-way. Hey, I got a little bunch of spare building materials. I think I'll just put it out here in the right-of-way in front of my house. Um, uh, we had a couple of code enforcement incidents where, uh, the, uh, North Lincoln sanitary, uh, delivered some, uh, with storage, big giant containers. And, uh, people were like, oh, just put it in the right-of-way in front of my house. Uh, no, you can't do that. Um, you, you've got to put it on your own property. You don't just get to utilize the public, the, the property that the public has a right to. Um, so we've had problems on Eighth Court with, um, people uh, being upset about people, uh, storing stuff, signs and, uh, gravel and vehicles in the right-of-way. It's just not uncommon. You can drive down my street and you'll find, uh, you know, you know, wood, a wood storage bin, one guy's front porch, um, a fountain, which happens to be my house, um, all in the right-of-way. Uh, the right-of-way is not, uh, for the use of the private individual's personal use. When there are encroachments and sometimes through policy, we allow people to, uh, we license. We issue a revocable license to allow people to utilize the right-of-way provided they hold us harmless and indemnify us and, uh, sometimes pay a fee. So we have a couple of those license agreements, uh, floating around the city. Usually they're used for enforcement, uh, for encroachments, not for enforcement. So, uh, in, what I did was I took a suggestion, uh, that I sent to, to Mr. Chandler and I just took the email and I edited it a little bit and insert, shortened it a little bit and, and inserted it into the, the council communication. Um, under the code, you've delegated to Ron, um, traffic, uh, control and parking. Um, he can by order, uh, create, you know, parking zones and traffic control controls and, um, you can still do it by resolution. And the code actually says that periodically Ron is supposed to take his parking schedules and traffic control orders to you and get you to ratify them. And that hasn't happened in the entire time I've been here by this manager or the prior manager. And I really can't find any approved parking schedules, um, for a lot of the signage and things that we have out there. Um, but the, the proposal is that you take a look at your constrained rights-of-way. And Ron orders, um, no parking on both sides or parking only on one side um, as a, a safety measure. And then, uh, after we do a couple of those, we, uh, bring them to you um, for approval of, in a resolution. Um, and then, uh, as a corollary to that, and this is based on an earlier, uh, complaint when you had some people come to council and say they have no place to park and they really need to park. I think it was a beach access. Um, that we maybe administer a, uh, a revocable license or parking permit program where we allow, uh, people to basically buy a permit which makes it legal for them to park in safe, approved spaces in the right-of-way. That doesn't mean they get the, move all their construction equipment and materials and sofas out into the parking space and use it like it's their own. It's only for, uh, licensed operable vehicles to park in the right-of-way. Um, but that's essentially the proposal. Let Ron use his delegated authority to, uh, issue orders prohibiting parking on constrained streets and, uh, have the public works department put up signage that reflects that. Uh, take those orders, bring them to you for ratification and a resolution and, uh, issue revocable licenses, parking permits, uh, for people to park in safe locations that we've determined, um, and again, parking of only licensed operable vehicles. So that's the pitch.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could take over your guys' screen and just show you a little bit of what we're talking about and then talk about a little bit of the broader implications of this. So one of the things I'm really coming to like about Zoom meetings is that you can take over screens. Uh, so I'm looking at Google Maps and this is, uh, Eighth Court. And, uh, you can see it's a very narrow dirt road. And as you go up, you run into areas like we just, all along here, we just saw going down here where there is, you got areas where you can park and areas where there is no parking. Um, so if you follow it up, let me just keep going around the corner. Again, you can see where this car, um, is, is poking out into the actual, uh, we use the term right-of-way, but this is actually the part where people drive upon and is as close as it can be to this, uh, this wall. Um, over here, there's a little bit more space where you can get in. And Richard's right when he says that this road is not unique. It may be one of the more extreme ones, but it's not unique. We do have roads where there's insufficient, um, uh, area for people to park, parallel park along the sides of the road. Um, we have the property, we have the road surveyed. So we got, we, we were able to get the, uh, to know where the right-of-way is. Um, uh, it is, uh, the, the drivable area right now is anywhere from 10 to 12 feet. The right-of-way goes up to 20 feet. If we were to, um, try to resolve this by widening the road, it would cost about a million, $350,000. Uh, that would be to, uh, in some areas, we'd have to cut back, put retaining walls in. You'd have storm drainage that would have to be, uh, taken care of. And then, of course, you'd end up having to pave the portion, you'd have to pave at least a portion of the road. So to resolve this by saying we're going to create more parking area, um, uh, becomes financially difficult to do. Uh, so when Richard talked to me about the idea of, uh, putting, of using the authority you've delegated, uh, putting up, prohibiting parking along the sides of the street where it's not possible, such as we've looked at as we go along here, um, I like that idea. Uh, but I wanted to bring it up with you because part of what Richard is talking about goes beyond just Eighth Court. It also looks at, um, uh, other, other roads that we have in the city that may be under this same, um, uh, same problems. And, uh, and then, um, when we start putting those up, then of course we have, we'll, we'll have an enforcement issue that we'll also deal with, it'll be a little bit more, um, out there, uh, because signs will be put up, uh, that says no parking between these signs and those kind of things. So it's a little bit clearer as to the fact that there is no parking in some, in some areas. So, uh, before, uh, before Richard and the chief and I really embarked on this, um, I just wanted to bring this to give you an update and to get, uh, any sense from you as to whether or not you have any reservations of us going forward with this.
All right, can you, uh, take down your screen, uh, give us back, then I can see who, what, Riley?
I think that's a great idea. I think, you know, establishing, even if you were to paint on gravel and show what the road is and no parking signs and that, I think it's a great idea. Um, also I had talked about this as far as, you know, where the public right-of-way is or public walkways or spaces and trimming back, you know, what's been overgrown as a public works project or streets project or parks project. Uh, because there's many areas in town where bushes and trees and grass have overgrown sometimes feet into the sidewalk. Um, you know, we don't, we do not keep up on our sidewalk, uh, on Highway 101. It is filled with weeds and things like that. And I think, though this isn't exactly that, but I think this pulls into that establishing what it is, the public right-of-way, where it is that, you know, be the city are responsible for.
Okay, all right, Deanna, you have your hand up?
I do, thank you. Um, I think this is a good idea. I really liked the approach and the presentation of this information. It was clear and concise. And I just want to check a couple of things. One, I think, maybe I read it in some of the packet, but has it, I have a couple of questions. But the first one is, um, has this been surveyed?
It has.
Okay, so that makes it easier to, to think about. Okay, thank you. The other, um, question is, could we also look at Logan Road for the same type of thing for permitted, um, parking for the owners? Um, it's been so terribly crowded with parking, even up and off of Logan Road. People are parking everywhere and they're across the line in some instances. But I just think now would be the time to just check that out because I don't know if it's been, it probably hasn't been surveyed since we took it on, since the city took it on. But, and then, um, if we can do that, just to see where the right-of-way is so we can begin a conversation about that, um, for Logan Road. And then And then for both roads, um, just to make sure that, um, that the neighborhoods or the, um, owners along there are being talked with so they understand what's going on and.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the other part that, um, that I want to mention is that Richard brought up that, uh, request for parking permits. One of the things that we don't have or that, uh, is some kind of a guiding policy on which I would make my decisions. Because we'll get those. And, um, I want to make sure that they're not just arbitrary decisions. And so part of what we would be doing is also looking at what kind of, uh, guiding principles, policies, conditions would we issue a parking permits on the right-of-way?
That'd be good. Riley, you're back on?
Also, I want, I would like to know where you have, let's say Logan Road, where people, residents have no parking signs in front of their property. How legal and enforceable are those things when it's in that, within that certain amount of feet? I see it all over town, not just in Logan Road. I want to see just as much as people violating the parking ordinance, people saying no parking, no parking is allowed here when they have no authority to state that. Because that's, that's as much or more than people parking a foot onto the road.
Mr. Chandler, uh, I was kind of making a note, and I, I know that you didn't bring it up, but going back to Northwest Eighth, uh, and the expense to fully utilize the right-of-way, clearly, the neighborhood could do an LID. Is that correct?
It could.
I mean, if, always that's a, an option for, um, and we have other gravel roads in and around the community. And, uh, you know, I guess what I'd want on the table is, is that's how, you know, right-of, right-of-ways and road and, uh, not improvements, but redone, get, will get done is through an LID?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then, then I, I know we've had, uh, in my time, lots of discussion on, uh, unsafe roads. And this whole idea of, of putting no parking signs on, on at least one side of, uh, the road to, to kind of keep the, the travel lane, you know, open. That's what I heard you talking about, if that would be, uh, part of this, um, survey or perusal, uh, as we go beyond Northwest Eighth and look at some of the other areas?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Uh, Judy, you had a, a question?
Yeah. In addition to personal no parking signs, have we ever looked at, um, the creative idea of putting up mailboxes where there's no mail but putting a sign on the mailbox that says, "Don't block mailbox"?
Um, no, I have not thought of that, but I will certainly put that into the mix.
That, that does exist.
Okay.
Okay. So, uh, you know, I, I think, uh, what I'm hearing is there is certainly no objection, as we've got both, we've got Public Works here and, uh, you know, they're listening to you, Ron, uh, clearly excited about some new activity, I'm sure.
We'll have fun.
So, uh, does it take, uh, so I, I would assume direction again from council, uh, to go ahead and have, uh, Ron and staff pursue this endeavor around, uh, where do we go? Right-of-way infringement? Would that be appropriate? Oh, Diane, go ahead.
You know, I hate to sound stupid. What's LID? I looked it up and it gave me a whole bunch of different ones.
Local Improvement District.
Local Improvement, okay.
That means the neighborhood, much like we've done, uh, on the sewer in some of the areas, you know, where the neighborhood pays for their sewer improvements, that would be the same thing. They would improve the road.
Okay, thank you.
Judy, you're back on, are you? Oh, okay. All right, with that, um, is someone interested in making a, uh, motion to direct staff?
So moved.
Riley?
Yep.
So, so moved, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
And that is? Was that Diane?
Diane Kuss.
All right, thank you. So Ron, uh, seems to be, um, you know, potentially here, you've got another job. And, uh, is there any, uh, further discussion on this motion? Seeing, hearing none?
Wait a minute.
Oh. What? You know, hit the button.
Maybe, I just, I was looking for it. I just want to say that I, you know, Ron, you'll probably come with some draft language back to us and talk to us some more about Logan Road potentially and all that. And just keep in mind that there are a lot of BRDs on Logan Road and they have off-street parking associated with those. So we need to really look at the territory and all that. But anyway, thank you.
And, and again, that, it goes well beyond Logan Road and Northwest Eighth.
Right.
But thanks for inserting your neighbor. All right.
Hey, I was.
What's that?
I said, "I live it trying to drive it." Jeez Louise.
All right. Um, so all those in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? All right. Thank you. The motion passes. And so that would cover our special city council meeting. Uh, we've accomplished the agenda. The only thing, if there are people watching, I would remind, uh, the public that there's, uh, masks, uh, being distributed tomorrow, Tuesday, from 3:00 to 7:00 at the Taft, uh, St. Clair Fire Station. If you're still, uh, looking for face coverings, that would be the, a place to pick them up. Riley?
I would, I would just like to ask the chief, when do we get to tour the new police station?
I'm hoping anytime now. So, um, we can, we can set that up as a group. Or if, uh, you want to, uh, parse this out as a individual, personal tour, we can, we can facilitate that now. There's a, a lot of finish work going on inside right now, just finalizing, putting furniture together and repairing, um, chips and paint and, and things like that from, from the move in. Not causing us, by the way, um, but, uh, but yeah, we're, we're ready to start accommodating that if we want to set this up as a, as a council group to get together. I know you got to be careful about how you gather, or, um, set it up as, uh, one or two people at a time. We're, we're happy to accommodate that and excited to show it off. It's, it's.
It's awesome. It looks great.
Well, I, I think the best move there would, you know, no more than three, um, and avoid the, uh, the meeting rules. Deanna?
Thank you. Um, I just had a couple of things. One, we were just talking about face masks and I'd just like to say, again, it would be just so perfectly wonderful and something fun when we need it. This has been a hard time for everybody. As if the city and Ed could get together and make some, um, Lincoln City masks with, um, face coverings with our logo on it and then distribute it to the businesses and, um, so they could hand them out. Just, you know, we just, we need some, you know, a little bit of fun here. And I think that would help, especially when now we're, we've moved to the, uh, required category for face coverings. I wear mine all the time. I have one tucked in my pocket. So, um, it would be fun to pull one out that has Dr. Post on it or else Lincoln City on it or however you guys, um, work your magic. I just think it would just be great fun. And then I just want to remind everybody that we're in the process of, um, collecting ideas, names and votes for renaming the villages that Cascade had and possibly the Knoll. That information is out there. It's on the city's website to take a survey. Takes like one minute. Um, and I would encourage as many people as care to, to go there and, and give us your ideas. That'd be great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mitch, do you have anything? Nothing, nothing from Mitch?
Nope.
Judy?
No.
Okay. No? Rick?
Uh, not really. I, I, I have been in a couple of stores, you know, Freddy's a couple of days ago, and I'm seeing 90% people comply. I mean, more often than not, I'm seeing big numbers of people wearing masks. And I'm, the only reason I mention it is I'm a little concerned because I see comments on Facebook of certain stores in Lincoln City where that's not the case. And I'm wondering if we are enforcing the, um, you must have a sign out front that says it's mandatory. There was a nice sign at one shop I saw that said, "Please help us abide by the mandatory mask requirement by putting on your mask before you enter the store," or something like that. And, and I thought that was a good approach. Oh, and also the electronic sign. Last time I saw it, it still said, "Thank you for wearing a mask." And can we have that say masks are required in this town? Or get out of Dodge?
And, thank you, Rick. Uh, chief, I, I think, uh, when we were talking about this whole issue of, uh, uh, face coverings, you reminded, uh, folks about the enforcement, uh, opportunities. Go through the health, uh, county health district or?
Yeah. County Health has a call center that they're taking those calls on. I would bring up, uh, this morning, we heard from,
Oh, look at this here.
We heard from the county sheriff, that, uh, Willamette Valley Communication, who is their dispatch, uh, facility, is actually, um, referring callers to the county regarding mask enforcement and stuff to a, a state call center website for filing those complaints. Because at, at this point, it is on each individual business to, to manage their customers and, and enforce those rules. And so the, the, whether it's going through the county call center or the state call center, that's how those are being processed at this time.
All right. So that's good to know. Except for trespassing, if it does get into a, an issue where someone won't comply, then they would, uh, call the local Lincoln City.
Correct. If they end up with a customer that won't comply and they've asked them to leave and the person is refusing and becoming resistant to, um, the, uh, request of the management, then they can call us and we can deal with it as a trespass complaint.
All right. Yeah. Riley, I think you had your time, didn't you?
Well, no, I had, well, I did, but I, there's still time to have. So I, I had asked Ron about the sign being both in Spanish and in English. And he said, yes, that's something they could do. And we are all, all out of signs. So I was wondering if it would be all right if we would make a temporary banner at the south side of town. Yeah, yes, it's not an electronic reader board, but, you know, four feet by eight feet, masks are required, both in English and in Spanish. I think the Newport Chamber of Commerce has one on each side of their build playing similar to that. That way it's, that way we have a sign on both sides of the town.
We'll get right on that.
Thank you.
Okay, back to you, Mitch.
I was just going to ask Ron, uh, where we were at with the city Facebook page?
It's ready to go. We can launch it this week if you, if you would like.